Good evening. Thank you all for being here. I want to thank you for coming out to share this joyous occasion with us. We have had very few joyous occasions this year. We've had frustrating occasions, challenging occasions, frightening occasions, and mind-boggling situations. But yeah, I think the three most overused phrases of this year will be global pandemic, unconstitutional, and what's the third? You're muted. But this occasion is auspicious. And auspicious means suggesting a positive and successful future. And I think we have a positive and successful future coming. We have a lot of work to do next year, and we have a great crew to do it with between our commission and our staff. We're in great shape. So I'm going to make a couple of remarks and then let Pastor give us an invocation. So nobody here is new at being an elected official, but I wanted to take this opportunity to say a few things about what we do here and how we do it, based on a creed that was given to me by Commissioner Long from Bill Sadowski of Sadowski Funds. Public office is a public trust. Your influence derives directly from the public's faith in the board as a whole. According to our annual community survey, this BCC enjoys a high degree of respect in this community, much more so than higher forms of government. And I think this is largely because we respect each other, we respect our staff, and we respect the public. And that's incredibly important. And they usually respond in kind, with respect, usually. We can never take that for granted, though. You know, if we violate that trust, we do it at our own peril. Your satisfaction in your mastery of and your effectiveness in this position, and mine, is a function of the amount of time, effort, and enthusiasm we put into the job and the relationships that we're able to build with people in the community, with our colleagues and with the staff. We must be able to respect another person's right to disagree with us, to challenge us, and to give input into our decision-making process. We make our worst decisions when we think we already have all the answers. We should never forget that in a democracy, we are merely temporary representatives of the greater residents, of the greater citizenry. The citizens retain all the power. God bless and protect our democracy. To start off our ceremony, we have an invocation delivered by Pastor Clarence Williams of the Greater Mount Zion -- where is he? Mount Zion AME Church in St. Petersburg. Please rise and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by our county administrator Barry Burton.
Good evening. I'm so grateful that the framers of our great country understood our place in the midst of all that is, one nation under God. Let us look to Him. Father, we're thankful and grateful for the United States of America. We give You praise and thanks for the democratic process, especially for the members of this chamber. Bless them, the homes from which they come, the families that will be sharing their work, their sweat equity, their passion and their love with the members of this county. We're grateful. Thank You now for those members of this chamber, especially Long, Justice, Seal, and Flowers. We pray of God that You will contain and eradicate this virus. Bless the healthcare workers. Bless the essential workers. Law enforcement, fire. We give You praise and thanks for the researchers and scientists that seem to be making our days a little brighter. We pray of God that You will bless this nation with the Spirit of unity and love, that armed with Thy powerful hand, that we may be able to help the downtrodden, lift the fallen, protect the innocent, and work for the citizens of Pinellas County. Amen.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Well, I want to introduce somebody that certainly does not need any introduction in this room. Ken Welch is our outgoing darn-it commissioner from District 7. I think we've said all we -- well, except for a little bit. We've probably said everything we need to say to him, but one more time. You're going to be sorry. You're going to miss us so much. Commissioner Welch is going to do a few remarks for us right now.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening. Come on, y'all can talk back now. Good evening.
Good evening.
To Chair Gerard, to Vice Chair Eggers, Commissioner Peters, to my -- I'm going to have to stop saying "my" after tonight. To our re-elected commissioners, Charlie Justice, Janet Long, Karen Seal, and our newly-elected, but not new to us, because we do know Renee, Commissioner-elect for the next five minutes, Renee Flowers. And then we won't say "elect" anymore. To all the family, friends, elected officials, members of the judiciary who are here tonight, it's an honor to join you today for this swearing-in of our Pinellas County Commissioners. To each of you, congratulations on your election victories, and thank you for your continuing service to our county, to our state, and to our nation. Each of you has excelled in this special calling of public service, and you've upheld the vision of progress in progressive Pinellas that has long been embodied in the work of this commission. Whether you look at the acquisition of green space and parks here in the most densely populated county in the state, and I understand the numbers, over 20% of our space is actually green space and parks, or you look at the wisdom of past commissions to implement the penny for Pinellas, which has funded critical infrastructure for decades, including the Pinellas Trail, which ironically enough has served as a bit of therapy for our community during this pandemic. A lot of folks are out on the trail just getting that release. And those are just a few examples of the forward-thinking legacy of this county commission. Now, the county commission role is really all-encompassing. If you are a political junkie, like all of us are, if you're reading zoning and site plans at 10 o'clock at night, Commissioner Eggers, you are a political junkie. The county commission is all of those things. It's executive and legislative. We pass laws. We issue executive orders. We act as the chief local elected official. To the thousands of folks that live in the unincorporated area, we are their local government. The commission funds public safety through the sheriff, and we manage EMS and emergency management. We oversee tourism and economic development, and through our administrator Barry Burton, we provide the basic core services that make a civilization civil: water, sewer, solid waste, transportation. And we provide technology, facilities, and support for our constitutional officers as well. The commissioner role is vital, and I'm so thankful that our community continues to select outstanding leaders for this role. And I know every one of you personally, I could not be more overjoyed that we have this leadership going forward. And commissioners, I know that you are thankful for the vote of confidence from our community and from the support from your family and friends, because like it or not, when we are in office, our families are in office as well. I want to leave you with a few quotes that have stuck in my mind from previous commissioners. First is from Sally Parks, who said, quote, "Take the job seriously. Take yourself less seriously," end quote. Bob Stewart, after we had a tremendous budget discussion on what we could fund for the next year, said, "We have, quote, 'unlimited needs and limited resources.'" That is the Stewart principle. And of course, our friend John Neroni, who had a way with words, when we had another penny for Pinellas shortfall and we had a list of projects that we had to cut, John said, when he found out about it, "That was a shockeroo," putting that word in the annals of Pinellas County Government. And then, of course, it's my friend Charlie Justice. You knew you weren't going to get through this without me called out. Who after -- you know, one of the things, we deal with some genius-level staff, and whether it's Kelly talking about stormwater and how you calculate a stormwater fee, or how much nitrogen is in the fertilizer ordinance. After a while, the math just kind of -- you're kind of punch drunk after the math. And after one of those sessions, Charlie said, you know, "When I was elected, quote, 'It was my understanding there would be no math involved,'" end quote. So I'm going to end with some numbers and with some light math that even a Bogasega pirate could understand. Yeah, I said it. In 1912, the county was founded. So this is the 108th year of our county's existence. We are the sixth-largest county in Florida with a population of 975,000. Duval is right on our tail. They're probably going to pass this pretty soon. In 2019, which was pre-COVID, we had more than 15 million visitors to Pinellas County. Ronnie Duncan, I remember in one of his advertisements when he was running for office, had an ad that caught my ear. It said, "Pinellas County spends $6 million a year for their budget." And I was like, wow, is it really that number? And yeah, if you took our budget at the time and divided it by 365, it was about $6 million a year. Right now, it's $7.4 million a day. I'm sorry, not a year, a day. Our $2.7 billion budget divided by 365 is about $7.4 million a day. Use that when you go out to the Great American teaching. It always gets the kids' attention. I think that's Kat upstairs. Is that you, Catherine? So I wanted to kind of put in perspective what a rare privilege it is to be a county commissioner. And so I wanted to get a list of all the county commissioners since our inception, and I could not find it. And so I sent Ken and Kat an email and asked, "Where's the list?" And there was no list. So Kat had her staff go out to the plaque before our assembly room, and they put all those names into a spreadsheet. Anybody want to guess? You want to guess, Commissioner Justice? How many commissioners since the inception?
93.
You're a little high. 83 commissioners have served since the inception of Pinellas County. And there are names on there that you'll recognize. Solomon Smith Coachman in 1911, Daniel Doc Bird McMullin in 1915, and then again in 1931, and William H. Belcher in 1939. You notice those are all road names, right? So, Mr. Vice Chair, I still hold out hope to see the Dave Eggers roundabout in Palm Harbor, because the precedent has already been set. I want to talk a little bit about history before I take my seat. Again, we've had 83 commissioners in the history of Pinellas County. Calvin Harris was the first African-American elected in 1998 after being appointed by Governor Lawton Childs. And for the first time, female commissioners comprised a commission majority with the election of Commissioner Kathleen Peters in 2018. And Renee Flowers brings two firsts to our board. She is the first African-American woman ever elected to the Pinellas County Commission, and her election brings a female supermajority to the Pinellas County Commission. So we really could not ask for a finer group of public servants to lead our county. So on behalf of the people of Pinellas County, I want to thank you all for your passion, for giving of yourselves, for being open and accessible to the community. And in this age of social media, sometimes that's tough. And for fulfilling the God-given purpose of service that drives each of you to do the work of local government, which is the most connected form of government and is closest to the people. Congratulations, my friend, and Godspeed. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right. All right. Now we will start the swearing-in process. I'm going to invite Commissioner Long to come forward. Janet Long represents District 1, an at-large commission seat. She has served as county commissioner since 2012. And joining Commissioner Long is her family and the Honorable Pam Campbell, who will administer the oath of office. So y'all.
My Honor, thank you. So Rick, you want to come over there and hold the Bible? Janet's right hand is going to be on the Bible. Left hand's going to be on the Bible. Right hand's going to raise. Okay, ready? All right, if you'll please repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Florida.
And of the State of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the State.
And the Constitution of the State.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Hold on. I got to get my mask back on. And that I will well and faithfully.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of Pinellas County Commissioner.
Of a Pinellas County Commissioner.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Yes. Congratulations.
We're going to wait till later to take pictures, but Commissioner Long, do you want to make some remarks?
Yes.
I can't believe you had to ask me that, Commissioner Gerard. So first, I would just like to offer my thanks to Judge Campbell for swearing me in today. Judge Campbell and I started out together. We were just kids, right? Working in the Florida Legislature in 1975, and we have been together through thick and thin ever since. Thank you for being my friend and for being here tonight. For me, this is the culmination of a lifetime of public service in this county. I want to thank my husband, Rick, who has lived with me through thick and thin as well. He deserves it. And my daughter, Anisa, and Jeff. And also, I would be remiss if I didn't thank Doyle for all that he has done for me for the past six years and for being a part of my family. Thank you, Doyle. Thank you very much, everyone, for being here tonight. Thank you, Commissioner Gerard. And Ken, I'm still mad at you, just so you know.
Commissioner Long is mad at Ken because he hasn't played his saxophone for us. We're going to have to call him back to do that, aside from the fact that you're leaving. Okay. Next, I'd like to invite Charlie Justice to come forward as Commissioner for District 3, at-large Commissioner. Charlie has served as Commissioner Justice, pardon me, has served as county commissioner since 2012, too. Joining Commissioner Justice is his family and the Honorable John Carrasis, who will administer the oath of office.
Are you ready, Charlie?
Yes, sir.
Raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
And of the State of Florida.
And of the State of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the State.
Under the Constitution of the State.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Perform the duties of Pinellas County Commissioner.
Perform the duties of Pinellas County Commissioner.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Congratulations.
Commissioner Gerard said I had 45 minutes. We want to talk about tax incrementing finance districts tonight. Thank you all for being here. Thank you, Judge Carrasis. You know, this is the first time the scheduling is working. I've tried to get Judge Carrasis to swear me in each of my times that I've been sworn in. The Honorable Judge and I were first elected to the Florida House together in 2000, and we spent a lot of time on the campaign trail together and got to know each other. And then, serving in Tallahassee, I came to respect his service so much, and so it's a great pleasure for me to have you with us tonight. I want to thank my family as well. I was trying to count the number of campaigns I've been through, Janet, and I don't know where we finally got a number, but Kathleen has been through every single one of them. And we have grown from being a couple to engaged, to married, to parents, to older parents. And my family has supported me every step of the way, you know, from turning part of our bedroom into a campaign office and then turning part of the bedroom into a Zoom County Commission office. And just that part of my life expanding and expanding more into our personal life, never complaining, always supporting. And my beautiful daughters, Allison and Erin, are here tonight. My mother-in-law, Carolyn, who pitches in every way she can to help. And we had a great support team this year on the campaign trail of friends. We had a Thursday night cabinet Zoom meeting every week to kind of go over and figure out what we were doing the next week. And not all of them could be here tonight, but I wanted to thank Allison and Billy, who are here in the back. Their support has meant a lot to me this year. Also, of course, I want to recognize Courtney Vanderburg up in the galley for all her support. Courtney came to work for me as an intern in Tallahassee in 2001 and has been with me off and on ever since. And so thank you very much, Courtney, for all that you serve. I'm glad that we're here in this building tonight, in this historic courthouse that we just designated a few years ago as historic. Because while I agree with the commissioners' comments earlier, we should not take ourselves seriously, and anyone who knows me knows I don't take myself very seriously at all, but the work that we do, Commissioner Welch, is important. It's important work that we do here. And I love that we're here in this historic building, and I love that we're part of that history now. The stories that people will tell years from now hopefully will include the good work that the last couple of commissions have done and the good work that this current commission will do coming forward. So again, on behalf of my family and everyone on our team, thank you very much for this honor and thank you very much for being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Justice. All right, next, I'm going to invite Commissioner Seal up as Commissioner for District 5, single-member district. She has served as county commissioner since 1999. She is our longest-term commissioner. I was going to say oldest, but that's not true. She has served as county commissioner, yeah, since she was appointed first by Governor Bush. Joining Commissioner Seal is her family, her husband Ron Seal, who's going to be swearing her in.
Karen, repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
And of the State of Florida.
And of the State of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
That I'm duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the State.
Under the Constitution of the State.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
And I will well and faithfully perform.
The duties of Pinellas County Commissioner.
The duties of the Pinellas County Commissioner.
On which I am now about to enter.
Upon which I am now about to enter.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Well, it's such an honor for me to be here tonight. You know, first and foremost, I have to thank the citizens of Pinellas County for the humble honor to vote in their behalf and to make decisions in their behalf and to just serve. It is indeed a pleasure. I purposely asked my husband to swear me in tonight. It's been said already many times, but our family is the rock under which we depend upon on a daily basis to sometimes get us through some of these hard times. And during COVID this last year, we didn't get divorced. We made it. So my son, older son Brian, and his wife Lindsay, and Georgia and Claire. And the tiara is in honor of Georgia because Mimi and Gigi wear our crowns when we're together. So thank you for the indulgence. I also wanted to mention that Lindsay's parents are here tonight, Charles and Bed Peter, and then my older brother, my only sibling Kent, and his wife Jean Williams. So I was able to have my family here. We are missing my younger son Travis and his son fiance in Austin, Texas, but I feel very, very fortunate. As many of you all know, this is my last term, and I have to say, it's the first time I've ever gotten the speech right. I usually blub it or make a mistake, so I'm really happy about that. I was not able to be at the Friday agenda meeting, and I know that the goodbyes were said towards Ken. But Ken and I have served on the county commission together for 20 years. And I would venture to say, and I didn't look at the whole list, but we probably have served longer together than almost any other commission or commissioners. And he has been, I put in his goodbye card, frankly, it sucks that you're leaving. And we've, he's been honest, ethical, smart, moving our county forward in so many different ways, bringing issues that we really needed to address, and it has been an honor and a privilege to serve with you. Finally, I'll wrap it up. I want to mention, welcome, Commissioner Flowers, as she is sworn in. And also to mention both Cindy Simmons, who's been my assistant since the first day I was in office. If she was here through February 2nd, it would be 22 years that we've served together. And then my new assistant is up in the peanut gallery, Jan Tracy. Cindy, I couldn't have done it without you. You know that. You've been my right-hand person, and I'm very proud of. We've said along the way, over 22 years, we've never had an argument. Now, I think that says a lot. So anyway, thank you all so very, very much. And it is, again, an honor and privilege to serve with such a great commission and to continue on making good decisions for the citizens of the county. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Seal. And we want to know where you got your tiara, because the other four female members of the commission would like one. Christmas present? What?
It'll show our single tiara.
That's right. That's right. By Tuesday, by tomorrow morning would be great. Okay. And last, but certainly not least, I want to invite Renee Flowers to come forward. She is our newly-elected commissioner from District 7, single-member commissioner. Joining Commissioner Flowers is her family and the Honorable Patrice Moore, who will administer the oath.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and the government.
The Constitution and the government.
The Constitution and the government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Florida.
And of the State of Florida.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office under the Constitution of the State.
To hold office under the Constitution of the United States.
And that I am well and faithfully, and that I will well and faithfully perform.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
The duties of Pinellas County Commissioner.
The duties of Pinellas County Commissioner.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Oh, how good it is to dwell in the house with men and women who serve and protect. So it is, um, it is a heart-touching moment to be here. And it's not just because I would be the first African-American woman, nor is it because of a supermajority of women on the council. But it's because we are given the honor to be of service. And that is what is most important to me. I want to thank my family for coming on today. My daughter Kaisha, my son Joshua, and my big little sister Lenore. I'm the baby of 12. And so with 10 invitations, it was kind of hard to select who would be here on today. But I wanted to invite my big little sister because during the campaign, some days got a little rough, if you followed it. Some of the things that were said were very hard and harsh. But my sister bought me flowers every single day to my house. And she would give me a hug and say, "Hold on." So thank to my daughter and my son. They've been with me in politics since my children were six, nine, and 12. So they've been raised in the world of politics, and they understand the importance of representation. So I'm so grateful that they are here today. My son Jeremy had to pick up little Jeremy from school, so he could not be here. But I am grateful and thankful for all that they have done and are doing in my life, keeping me straight and keeping me focused. To Greg Wilson, who has been with me since 1998, when I first ran for city council. He won the tiger off of me at Tiger Bay. And then, to make me feel better, he came up at the end and said, "If you ever need my help, just call." So since 1999, we have been together, and I want to thank Greg for that. To my pastor, who puts up with my tirades and my calls, but who also has helped to groom me in the Word and who thinks it not robbery to always say yes whenever I call. So to my pastor and my church family, thank you. To Judge Patrice Moore, who's also my soror. Again, you don't even have to ask. She'll get offended if I don't ask. So I want to thank her for being here and being present on today. I had a chance to manage her campaign efforts. And we got to be, I think, especially close at that time. And it's all about encouraging one another. And that's what we have to do, and that's what I intend to do with my new colleagues. And I sincerely hope that you will also continue to encourage me. To Ken, we call him Commish, a select group of us. The African-American elected officials decided that we would come together and support each other and just uplift each other, because sometimes we get beat up so hard from people in our community. But we refuse to give up on people in our community. So I'm going to continue to call him. Yes, I am. He's on speed dial. I got on him today. I said, "You were just texting," and I wasn't sure if you were going to make it. He was like, "Oh, no, I'm coming." So thank you so very much for your support. Thank you for the 20 years of service. I remember when we fought hard to get the single-member district, and the name that rose to the top was Ken Welch. And that's who ran, and that's who won, rightfully so. And you have done an absolutely magnificent job in everything that you do. And as I've shared before, I cannot follow in your footsteps, but I can certainly try wearing my stilettos. And that is what I will do. And last, but certainly not least, I want to thank Darlena, who's going to remain on. So she's been here for 20 years with the commissioner, and she accepted my request to remain on to help me do the work, because no one can do it alone. It takes a team. And I look forward to being a part of that team with every single commissioner that is here, because I've known each one of you way before I arrived here on today. And I respect each and every one of you, and I look forward to doing the hard work. To my godmother, Ms. Ruby Shannon. My parents, both are deceased. And they were instrumental in getting me involved in politics. Judge Frank White was my uncle, and that was the first campaign I worked on. But Ms. Ruby Shannon has been my mother's best friend. She was there when my mother took her last breath with us. And so I thought it fitting to have Ms. Ruby here with me today. I wrote something personal for her in the Bible that I was sworn in on, and I will present that to her, letting her know how much she means to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Flowers. We are excited to have you with us. I want to thank Pastor Williams for being here and blessing this occasion, Judges Moore, Campbell, and Carassus, everyone else who has shown up, Mr. Burton for doing our pledge, and to Charlie Justice for suggesting that this would be a great idea to have this event here. Actually, and Janet as well. Because this was a great idea, much nicer than five minutes before we start a meeting. Okay, get back up on the dais and start working. We'll see you all tomorrow morning. Thank you.